He did.
Yes, he did.
Oh, this is.
We'll go ahead and call the committee to work tonight.
Mr. Matziel.
Here.
Mr. Steve Donahue.
Here.
Mr. Kevin Meadows.
Here.
Mr. Hubert Allen.
Present.
Mr. Steve Rosen.
Here.
Mr. Harry Donahue.
Here.
Mr. Wayne Flither.
Here.
Forum, we have motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, a move that we approve of gender has submitted.
Mr. Matziel.
Yes.
Mr. Steve Donahue.
Yes.
Mr. Kevin Meadows.
Yes.
Mr. Hubert Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Steve Rosen.
Yes.
Mr. Harry Donahue.
Yes.
Mr. Wayne Flither.
Yes.
Okay, we're here tonight for the conditional use permit for the Green Ridge workshop tonight. Before we get started, I want to point out a couple of things to the people here who listen to the workshop. Please be aware that tonight is a workshop. Public comments are not for this forum, they're for the public hearing. If you have any questions or comments you'd like to make, the county has set up with a QR code. It's here tonight, you can scan that, and there's an email address there, info@greenridge, that you can send questions to, you get all kinds of information, a copy of the CUP is there, is that correct?
Yes, sir. On our county website, we have a Green Ridge project page, and the email address is greenriddgecomments@cumberlandcounty.virginia.gov.
Again, if you could please just hold your comments, comments are allowed when we have the public hearing. Everybody will be allowed to speak at that time. Thank you, and go ahead and start with the workshop.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have heard this evening Mr. Will Schumay, who is the representative for Green Ridge, and he'll be coming to provide presentation this evening.
Hi, good evening. My name is Will Schumay, I'm the law firm of Blue Flyers, I've been working on this for quite some time. With me also is, I have Mike Wallace with the engineering firm of PRC, engineer, engineering group on this, answering questions that you might have in addition. I recognize that this is an initial workshop, we're going to have a subsequent workshop, where we'll give you a more detailed analysis and discussion of particular conditions. We've submitted a number of recommended conditions, largely patterned on the previous case, obviously changes that we think that we appreciate. We're still working with county staff representatives on some of the conditions which we'll discuss in the next workshop. But this, and I do thank you for the opportunity to come here to give an initial overview of the project, some of the changes that we're requesting from what's approved to Johnson and Co.
Thank you. As you know, this is not a formal forum, maybe questions come up in time to time. Our goal here is, the planning commission is to take our time, make sure everything is thoroughly investigated, questions whatever we may have. We want to be very transparent in how we do things, and we're in a hurry, that's why we scheduled two workshops, so we don't have to rush through and get everything done first night, and we appreciate you working with us on that.
Thank you. We really appreciate it, too, because from this then we'll be in a better position to discuss other issues that might come up. Thank you very much. As you all undoubtedly know, there was an additional use permit approved for a much larger landfill in 2018 by the Cumberland County Department of Superior. We recently refiled another condition, okay, thank you. We recently refiled another conditional use permit in looking at the case going forward, which reflects that this landfill has been significantly reduced. It's significantly less intensive than the original one approved in 2018, and that is an improvement based on the case site studies we talked about, and the detailed design improvements in visiting the folks in the community that significantly reduces the scope of the project itself. Some of those changes that I'll discuss impact the size, the ultimate engine, the waste disposal area. It will affect the hours, it will no longer be a 24-hour interval. And it will reduce the truck traffic, the amount of waste that can be accepted, and other impacts. So what is Green Ridge now? When we came in 2018, it was a non-hazardous municipal solid waste facility, and it still is. It's just going to be smaller and less intensive with more safeguards placed than over the above the DQ normally require. Right now, what we have done is, in going forward, it's about 1,200 acres. Initially, we were looking to get some old permits to impact less than two acres of weapons, significantly less than that in some streams. We have revised that to hit the first phase, the one not to have any impacts whatsoever on any of the jurisdiction weapons or the streams. As a result, on the initial phase of this, under what is received as part A permit, essentially what you have to do to get a landfill permitted under the modern regulations is extraordinarily intensive. There's a process called a part A permit, where the DQ analyzes and they have to provide detailed analysis on a host of a range of different issues, cultural resources, hydrology, geology, determine if the site is appropriate for it, is it suitable, if the soils work, cultural resources, the geological formations, and we have gone through that process. And I would say, coming to find, to give you an idea of how intensive that is, it's probably spent more than $20 million in this project so far. So we have a lot more information today than we did when we observed back in 2018. So we can provide detailed analysis of everything related to the water flow. We have water monitoring, we have wells monitoring for over seven years on site, and DQ has determined that this is a suitable site for a landfill. Once you get through the part A process, you then have to go through the very exact and specific design, how you designed that, that's called a part B, part A. That's where the rumble, you've been working through DQ's file, and DQ's air torment, but that gets in with the details exactly how the landfill must be designed to operate. And that's an extensive process, as it has well. What we're coming in under the part A is to set forth that it will not have any impacts, like I said, on the streams or weapons. As a result, under the part A that was approved, the waste disposal is currently proposed is 104 acres of actual waste disposal. Now there may be expansions, if we do get federal permits to serve weapons or streams, but given that we are not relocating Pine Grove Road, which I'll discuss in a moment, which significantly alters the size, height, scope of the project, we know that we will be nowhere near what was anticipated in terms of the actual waste disposal area. And so you will see in our proposal, in the initial conditional use permit, there was a condition that said the maximum waste disposal area would be 650 acres. And what we've put in our latest proposal is the maximum would be 350 acres, even assuming we have the additional DQ and federal permit, which is not sure. Green Ridge, it will have a number, it keep the expensive perimeter heavy tree buffers, which include the 250-foot black perimeter buffer along the adjacent residential properties, even a 50-foot buffer along the future entrance that we anticipate offering at 60. As was initially anticipated, the landfill would accept 5,000, up to 5,000 tons a day. What we are proposing at this point is to cut that to a maximum in the conditional use permit to 3,500 tons a day. In order to avoid having any impact on weapons whatsoever, we would temporarily have to come through Pine Grove Road to access the Pine Grove Road to Route 60. What we would put in this condition is that to the extent we were using Pine Grove Road, you could accept more than 1,500 tons a day, which equals 7,500. In addition, we are going to put in a condition to reduce the hours of operation instead of being 24/7, which is people that are concerned about the community. We're putting in the, we're suggesting that there be a condition that operate 6:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, 6:00 to 12:00 on Saturday, and no operations on Sunday. We're still anticipating, and it'll be part of our agreement with the county, that free of charge to Cumberland, there would be a convenience center to take local waste from Cumberland residents. That would operate similarly to the hours of the landfill itself. People would come across the scales, check in, and we go to the convenience center. I will say, and I can discuss, one of the things that came through talking to leaders in the community, it was a great concern in Cumberland that people were having difficulty properly disposing of their motor oils and motor fluids. That was an issue that we've actually noticed that in terms of our monitoring of what's going into the various tributaries in the county. And so one of the things you'll see in the new conditional use permit that we're proposing is that we would take the motor fluids and motor oils of Cumberland residents that come into the landfill, wouldn't be disposed of in the landfill itself, and we would take it and then have it cored off appropriately, as an initial requirement in front of the county. The other thing that was coming through, there was an anticipation, it was never an anticipation of Green Ridge, because as I've discussed, essentially county waste that we can then down to GFL, this landfill was intended to serve Virginia. That our anticipation was that there was a fast shrinking, lack of capacity in waste, as I talked about in a minute also, that very soon we would do two companies that would be in control, probably 97% of the private landfill facilities in Virginia, which would have enormous impact, often with our price and cost of disposal. But there was a provision that it could take out of state waste, which could increase the amount of waste that was coming in. Green, county waste, and GFL anticipates their needs, they serve several hundred thousand customers in Virginia, and they could handle up to 3,500 tons a day, easily. And so what we put in our part A permit is that this landfill will only accept Virginia waste. That was a big concern in the community, that they didn't want out of state waste coming, they wanted Virginia to be served, Cumberland County to handle, that's a central division in Southwest Virginia. We made that commitment in our part A permit, that this will only accept Virginia waste. And that we have keeping the commitment that there will be no sludge, we talked about that, that's a major brutal issue. And there's a reason why almost all landfills like sludge, and I can talk down a little bit, but they're not going to do that. We are the ones that collect and said we won't accept sludge, sludge of large, we know as much as a big odor producer that can smell as a reprocessed wallboard. And so we would be keeping in the top that whole issue, to ensure that it's not an odor problem. This is laid out, we can talk in more detail, I don't know if you can see it. If you see that red line, you can see it. You can see right here, this is the new 104 acres, this is where the new revised initial layout for the waste disposal area itself is. So why do we bring with the county waste and GFL, I want this landfill, there were several reasons. One is that it made a determination within the midlandic area that there's going to be a rapid shrinking amount of disposal capacity, especially if you live to the north east. It's a very difficult landfill. It's going to expand at this time unless a green period of the modern regulations. And you're having an enormous amount of waste that's being shipped down from New York to Jersey, coming down. That is accelerating. And the other thing that Jerry Seeford, the principal county waste manager of Green Ridge, anticipated that there was one very large landfill in the area, that was independent of the public in county waste, that called Shusman from Chesapeake, that's where Cumberland was based for many years. He predicted for various reasons that that landfill has been closed, that their expansion had involved actually putting the recent global work in, which he determined weren't the Rochester County that were proven under the regulations, and also assisted that idea. And he was correct, Shusman's example closed to income waste. And so that is now means two companies control 97% of the private landfill capacity. I think Cumberland right now is already experiencing the effects of the shrinking capacity. I think my latest analysis of the budget, and it went over almost $175,000 of our budget in terms of disposing of the waste in county. I think that number is just going to continue to accelerate over time. That's going to be a huge, without this landfill, then that's going to be a huge challenge. This landfill allows Green Ridge and GFL to tie services to their customers on very competitive bases, even in Virginia and in Cumberland County. So why Cumberland County, why they look at it is, it was the ideal location for the operations that it would serve. The county waste and GFL for this, will serve in Central and Southwest Virginia. Over 70% of it is coming from Central Virginia, over less than 3% was coming in from Southwest Virginia. And so if you were to look at the circle of transfer stations, coming to county bounds, as you collect the waste, you go to the transfer stations, and then the waste is hauled from the transfer stations to the landfill itself. This is like the epicenter of the area, the Virginia graphic area that county waste serves. They looked at four sites in Cumberland County, and looking at the, and working with the previous board supervisors, it became very clear that there was a strong recommendation and a direction to put the landfill on the easternmost portion of Cumberland County, because that would have the least impact to Cumberland County residents. And it makes sense, because 70% of your traffic is coming from the east to the west. So you're not having nearly as many vehicles go through Cumberland County itself. As part of the facility operations themselves, as we can talk about at length, there's an extensive groundwater monitoring program, we can drill wells of the measure of the surface flow, but also the groundwater, groundwater bedrock. So, and we have seven years of history on it, all part of the site-related, site department system, so that you're constantly monitoring, but absolutely unlikely, possibly appears any kind of issue. What you'll find on this with the modern day landfills, I mean, it's all subpar. Fewest few years ago, there weren't nearly as many regulations. Now it is extensively regulated, and there are probably redundancies that are placed in the system. And they're important, and that's one of the, one of the things that we'll talk about, and we can talk about later, is that under the DQ's regulation, modern day landfills have to obviously put in a number of those protections to make sure that you don't have fluids, called EJ, that's leaking into the ground. So under the DQ regulations, what you normally have is, you have to shake the subway flag. Then there's a special engineered flag that, that we'd say in terms of permeability is 10 to the minus 7, which is basically to make sure that fluids can't get through. And then what you're having is, is a very synthetic liner, it's very flexible. Then you're having a UJ collection system, where the same old automatic filter, and it comes down, then the fluids are then diverted, and then pumped and hauled out of the landfill. One of the things that came up repeatedly when we were going through the process, that's what DQ requires, it's very, very, very safe. It had a proven method of handling it. But there was a real emphasis on do you want a dual line system? Which basically take all those protections that I've talked about, which will include not only the flexible liner, we would keep having a special engineered flag, and have another system of monitoring the fluids that are coming out. And we agreed to do that. And that, you see that in the conditional use permit, that's a condition, that we're basically covering what DQ is going to require. Given the idea of the extent or the nature of that engineering and the protections, that probably ends in excess of $80,000 a year for this disposal. I'll cover that with my drive here. The issue is part of this process from county oversight, where we pay for full-time, fully, to get full-time, hands-on managing, overseeing the operations at the landfill. And I can have my colleagues talk about the UJ management system, it's very sophisticated. How to make sure that the fluids come down, these people waste, how it's hauled, diverted.
Can I ask a question?
Okay.
So, we talked about, obviously, why Cumberland. So, I'm trying to figure out, and I heard what you said about serving Central and Southwest Virginia, so I'm trying to figure out how that is, how Cumberland serves that? How, I mean, we're writing.
I'm sorry, servicing, how do you service Central and Southwest Virginia from Cumberland County? Obviously, I understand about 60 is the main thoroughfare, but it's a two-lane highway, and then, it's just, to me, it doesn't matter. We're looking at a two-lane highway, and you're talking about 75 trucks a day.
I'm just trying to figure out why Cumberland County was chose not, you know, if you serve mainly Southwest Virginia, we're talking about northern states, but maybe the same now. I was here in 2018, so I could answer some of those questions.
Or ask better questions, I guess.
So that's where I'm at.
I guess there was a few things. Obviously, with the landfill, in terms of the towns and span which you're trying to service, Cumberland is in that central southwest, so that's what I was saying. If you were to look at the operations of serving Virginia customers, including Cumberland, including Palat County, that's in the exact area we're trying to serve. So you're trying to find a location that is fairly rural, that doesn't have a lot of people right around the landfill. But it's, if you were to look at our transfer stations in that area, that's what I was saying is, Cumberland just happens to be almost in the middle of that spot, of the area that you would serve to meet the 3,000 tons a day. And so it is, Route 60 is the main arterial road for any kind of industrial business, and that's the main road. So one of the attractions on Cumberland is, coming off 288 and coming down 60, which is the main commercial quarter, you wouldn't want the landfill just to totally promote off the main Route 60. So it is, it is, any landfill that would be west of Richmond, you would want them to be using Route 60. So this is designed to serve Cumberland, it's not like, and only Virginia. So the other thing is, in looking at a, in looking at a locality, Cumberland had previously approved the landfill, and ultimately, for whatever reason, that permit got withdrawn, it's the street from Cumberland to the Republic at that time. And so in terms of the finances and economic benefits, the disciplines, even though we're reducing the size of the landfill, it is well into seven figures of annual benefit. in the county's budget. So we think this is, being on the eastern most portion of Cumberland County, there's closer to Route eighty-eight, and we can also serve southwest. So that's what we think it makes sense for the location that we're trying to serve. A landfill, obviously, is trying to serve multiple counties, which is different. And Cumberland is in that, and I'll have it, next time I'll bring the slide, it shows where our transfer stations are, and I think it really graphically shows where Cumberland is situated. That's the other reason why the other board supervisors worried us to be on the most eastern portion of the county. They didn't want the interior to come to the county. You won't even dispose through sixty as possible, so you don't have the trucks moving on all the back roads.
Can I ask a follow up question?
Sure.
So on the, based upon the thirty percent coming from southwest Virginia?
Approximately, yeah.
Yeah, approximately. It's about twenty-three trucks on that grid?
I'd say that's about, yeah. This is showing you how the landfill typically is built and trucked it, as you can see, with the skull and groundwater monitoring wells. You have a subgrade of the play that you're impacting and shaping. Then you have the specialized plant that's built, you have the liner that's installed below, and then you have the leachate collection system. And basically what we're doing is building that.
So I have a question.
Sure.
So, and I'm just putting a little graph here, but I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out exactly what I'm looking at. So on the leachate collection, that is below the drainage later, layer and the liner. So how does that work? Is there a hole in the liner intentionally for the leachate?
No, no, I'm just, I mean, but it comes above, it's above the liner, so what you're designing on, I can have Mike come in and discuss with you right after I'm done, exactly how you careful design it, but your leachate system's going to be above that line. Now, because we're going to develop a system, we're going to have another way to collect it in case for some unforeseen reason, somehow something to pass that first line. But it would be on top.
It just looks like from the picture.
And then you add this lower, I hope Mike can describe it. But what you're doing is you find that it's being piped out and collected in certain areas and it, and it will come out. In terms of odor management, I mean, that's one of the issues, and that's why we proactively had said in two thousand nineteen, we remain committed to that, that Robson and I accept and has those wastes. But the big thing, motor, if the number one thing that causes odor is waste, water sludge, and then processed sheet rock is the secondary one. And one of the reasons why I want, almost absolutely every landfill wants to accept sludge is it's incredibly profitable with various things, very heavy. So, feature from that, very generally. In addition, it is, and it can actually accelerate the decomposition of the waste and actually save capacity. So many number of reasons, almost all landfills accept sludge. But we made a commitment, as Jerry can always like to see, to be, to handle something that has odor issue. So that's why I missed out. I'm not aware of any other landfill. I'm not seeing it as a problem. And I'm not aware that we have a landfill that made a commitment to any profit or condition that it will be there. And it will have a comprehensive gas monitoring plan. Eventually, as you'll see in the top, the gas will actually capture the converted energy, which can suck. But odor control also includes maintaining a very small working face, you build a large working face, you know, daily cover this place on it. And then you put, and then you will initially burn off any gas that comes in, it's very little for start after a few days, then you actually then bring in the gas collection As I indicated, this part of the operation, you are the full time county employee of the landfill monitor. And you can inspect, inspect the facility. And as part of the regulations and the plan, Green Ridge will have an inspection program for the incoming waste. And what this landfill is going to do, basically, is it's, it's designed to, to accept the waste from IGFL. So what happens is they collect the waste from local market residents and then it's taken to the transfer stations and from their own transfer station, it comes to the landfill. And they're controlled by that process.
Can you explain further what that means in terms of they monitor what comes in? I mean, when I put my trash, I put it in bags and I throw it in the dumpster. They're not going to go through all the bags to see what's in it, right?
Yeah, what you're going to, there's something, for example, they have radiation monitors and that sort of thing can actually come into it. But this thing, the life in the minute, it's, it's obviously generally inspected in terms of the transfer station. You can see something out of the ordinary, so for example, hospital waste is a special, is a special thing, has a, has a special color included. But it is, it's, it's coming in to the transfer station. It's municipal, it's not allowed to accept as there's waste, the decontamination, that sort of thing. It's, but it's household waste, so it's, it's. It's in a punishing transfer station where the landfill, where it has to go through a gate and inspection system. And then it goes over.
Yeah, I guess I'm looking, I'm looking for more details of what that inspection system entails.
Yeah, in that, I'll let Mike speak to that. And then one of those questions I'll have, giving more detailed responses, it's very helpful, we go to transfer station.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So is it expected, trash coming from outside of this locality, is it expected before it gets in there or when it hits? How does that work?
You're going to, you're going to have two inspection systems. What happens is we'll have the waste that's collected, IGFL at the transfer station. So it comes into the transfer station. And from that, it's loaded onto the truck and trailers that will then go to the landfill itself. And then we'll have an inspection system at the landfill itself, and that's good for a date, will also be, there'll be monitoring systems, for example, radiation. So, and then there are periodic checks on what's coming in specifically. Now, I can't tell you that every single bag when it comes to landfills when you open it. But that's, that's the general way any landfill operates. And so you have multiple checks on that, but we will also know where it's coming from. It's coming from household waste.
Oh, so, so it's rejected, I mean, is there objection? So where does it go if it's rejected? I'm just curious.
Well, it depends. For example, if you get waste, let's say that you get waste that is not allowed, you can flag, you can call, you're going to have to haul it away from the landfill itself. But hopefully that gets to the transfer station, but you have the backup of just having it go through the gate at, at the one foot side.
From the bottom of the landfill, is there any type of liner?
Oh, we're going to have the double liner. You're going to have, you're going to have, you have the weighted liner, you then have the synthetic engineered fluid. It's designed to be incredibly, incredibly flexible. Then you're going to have a liner, and then we're basically going to, in terms of the engineered fluid and the liner, we have a second set, a redundancy of the same. So it, it is designed to basically not only capture, capture the fluid as it comes down, that's the, the ditch management system that I was talking about. But if, even after all the designs, it's designed to, if somehow something gets through that, that it basically acts as a bolt into those plants, so the fluid doesn't go anywhere. You also have monitoring systems that are completely placed, that you see an issue and then work with it. So there are multiple redundancies of putting in the gas. And that was one of the issues that came up is, yeah, DEQ requires these extensive liners of dual panel system, and that's, that's what we're committed to.
I've worked for, I've seen it all patrol for thirty years, and we made the liners for the landfills. Apparently, you're not using them anymore.
Well, I don't have my part, but the particular, but there's a particular type of liner that has to be used. It's flexible. So we're, we're going to have, we're going to have the composite liner that we talked about. We're also going to have the engineered fluid and the sub, subgrade fluid that's dashing under that, through that. Basically, as we talked about, and I can have Mike talk about a little bit further, what you have is a collection system that collects the, collects the fluid, becomes a C stand that looks to the bottom where you get to the liner, and then it is diverted out and then pumped. It'll have a decompression layer, which is part of the double liner system, that somehow it got through the first liner, is a collection, is a monitoring system under that. And this would be a separate additional liner that separates the waste from the surrounding soil and groundwater. And obviously, this is all done above, above the, we're not going to blow the water check as part of this, with the building of the landfill. And that's part of the analysis to make sure where your bedrock was, where the groundwater was, and so then as part of a specific design, you've got to be a part of that model. At five thousand tons a day, obviously, we had more trucks that were coming, you know, Route sixty, you'd have a hooky, that's the main thoroughfare, we could handle those trucks. But by slashing, by slashing the, the average, not, it's not an average, it's fifteen hundred tons a day for Pine Grove Road, that's over seventy-five trucks. Even if we got to, what we're also putting in additional use permit is the moment, if you were to go up fifteen hundred tons a day, you would have to shut Pine Grove Road and access directly to Route sixty.
So that was one of my questions. So on your plan as it stands right now, until it gets to fifteen hundred, no traffic is coming off sixty?
No, it's coming off sixty, but it goes to Pine Grove Road.
To Pine Grove Road.
It goes from sixty, and the limit is fifteen hundred tons a day, max, it's not a limit.
Okay, so why would you not start off the exit of sixty and go instead Pine Grove Road?
If you factor the, the weapons issue, you would have to do a small weapons permit for various reasons, maybe determined if you were going to get this landfill off in London, this purchase, the dirt, and some of the regulatory issues that were happening on, on federal level. We would need to just show that we wouldn't have, it would impact less than a lot on any block of the construction, which in development is extraordinary. So that's how we got to, like, coming to Pine Grove Road for London now, anticipating. Obviously, we want to expand, I want to clarify that, but we have to, but under no circumstances we're going to be under thirty-five hundred tons a day. So what we did is, it is up running, and also felt like, one, to my customers, ensuring capacity is important at this stage of the company. And also from the county's standpoint, from revenue, start off Pine Grove Road at the London now, and if they're able to permit, federal permits, then we shut down Pine Grove Road, and everything comes through this system.
All right, so just so I'm clear, what I'm anticipating voting on, it is for up to thirty-five hundred tons?
Yes, there, there's a possibility that it would show up to thirty-five hundred tons a day. And I will tell you one thing that I'll talk about in a moment, that one of the big issues from, I suppose, that was associated with Pine Grove, was that they did not want to see Pine Grove Road relocated. Even though the relocation is on, in the property, and you couldn't see that relocation from the road, that was a major issue. So what we have done is committed, it's part of our party, and we're putting in the machine permit, is that we will not relocate Pine Grove Road. So even though you have some trap, traffic coming off Pine Grove Road, we're guaranteeing it should not be located in the road. That adds up. And we're also putting in there issues from, we had waste on the west side, but their Pine Grove Road, that's one of the main drivers, it's one that cannot be nearly as large as the machine. But that was one of the major issues we kept hearing once, we don't want Pine Grove Road to be located. So that's part of the commitment.
So again, to put math in my head, that would mean seventy-five trucks up Pine Grove Road per day?
Yes, yes.
Question?
Yes.
If they're, if you're anticipating roughly seventy-five trucks per day, eighty percent of those coming in from sixty, then the twenty percent are going to come in from Lucas Grove or Deep Run, is that what you?
No, no, what I'm saying is, along Route sixty, we leave the truck last on Pine, off, on Pine Grove Road or what, it's separate. Traffic coming off Route sixty and we're going to Pine Grove Road, no more than fifty hundred tons a day, which given the size of the traffic.
I'm just talking about the truck, not, not so much the tonnage, but the, the number of trucks is what I'm asking about. So I'm wondering where the extra twenty percent, not the extra, but where the remaining twenty percent, where will they access the facility from?
Maybe I'm not understanding, but what we're anticipating is the seventy-five trucks a day is what equals fifteen hundred tons.
Correct.
No matter where it's coming from.
Right. Again, I'm not, I'm not so much worried about the tonnage, I'm, I'm thinking about the conditions of the road. That's what my end question would be, because if you have roughly sixty, sixty-four trucks a day coming in off of sixty?
All, all.
All coming in on sixty, because it says here approximately eighty percent coming from the east, and then, then they're coming from the west. Okay, all right, okay, all right.
Now, one of the things we would do as part of DOD is, we would probably additional pavement, we'd work with whatever safety improvements and so forth with Pine Grove Road, and that would be part of our party.
Okay. Has there any thought, has any thought been given to what kind of damage that's going to do to Pine Grove Road?
Well, one of the things, given the, the amount of traffic, and we can talk with Sam about that, we don't anticipate any, any damage. But one of the things we're going to have to do with DOD is, I'm sure they're going to want us to put additional layers of, add to the asphalt, to additional thickness of pavement, and that those being one part of the party permit. But we'll, we'll look at that, because that's not our, we don't anticipate any remaining issues on, on Pine Grove Road given seventy-five trucks a day, but we'll work with Sam on that.
Okay. I asked that because when they, you know, as they built the reservoir off of Columbia Road, the damage that was done to Columbia Road was, was surely extensive. And I'm familiar with Columbia Road and Jersey, but Pine Grove Road, I've been there a lot of times, so, just, just a question, that's all.
That's it. And we'll try, especially when you look at the construction, I mean, we'll be glad to work with Sam about it.
Thank you.
Our, our goal is not to have any impact on Pine Grove Road.
I have a question about the fifteen hundred and thirty-five hundred. Is the access road from sixty the only thing that, that's holding up the fifteen hundred to go to thirty-five hundred?
Well, yes, I mean, what we've said is, given, given Pine Grove Road and, and the two, you hit Route sixty, and you've got a hundred and some acres unless you get a waste that's supposed to come. So you're not going to want three thousand, thirty-five hundred tons a day coming in on a hundred acres off Pine Grove Road. So if we, once we get, if we were able to get the federal permit, be able to cross the little stream, which we don't anticipate should be ultimately a problem. And so you're, that's when you would be able to, and you got the permits to impact someone on the streams. That's an entirely separate process you have to go through. But assuming you got that, that's what'll allow you to go through fifteen hundred tons a day. But even with any possible expansion, we've calculated that you'd never be more than thirty-five hundred tons a day, given how much you trunk up the landfill. So that's why we're willing to put in additional use permit. If it's a deal of five thousand tons a day, the impact, we're willing to put in, we'll never be down. May, may be more than the fifty hundred tons a day. But we're assuming you don't have that guarantee. We don't know. We had a look at this to say, can we make this work for the fifteen? We had to look at this to say, can we make this work for the fifteen hundred tons a day? Landfill, basically a hundred and forty acres of waste, we can permit them to be there. But under no circumstance would it be exceeded, you know, thirty-five hundred tons a day.
So I've got a similar follow-up question to that, if I may. I've taken down just a couple of, a couple of your statements with quotes. And I wanted to see if it is consistent with what's just being said here, but you, you made a reference "at this point", and that was a quote, and then you also said "initial layout", and I'm just, I'm wanting to make sure that what we're talking about with the initial layout, and the "at this point", and the expansion of permits, is just for a permit to cross the stream on sixty?
Well, in, in order, what you would need to do to effectively expand down the hundred and forty, if you have to get the permit across sixty, because you also have to get the permit that may impact that you be impacting a certain percentage of streams.
So, so, let me follow up. So in specifics, you said "initial layout", when we're talking about the map back on, the site plan map, where you showed the little red picture, you know, showing, and you said, "this is the initial layout", so what would be your ultimate layout?
Well, you ultimately have to get the permits.
Right, I understand, I understand. But if you got, if you got all the permits you wanted, what would be the ultimate layout?
We would ultimately have to, that would have to work with people. What you would basically, what you would basically do is, you see this far area, we've been coming up, we're always saying we're not moving this, so this is completely off the table. So you would be coming in this area, probably the next, the next expansion period, we get some of the permits, you're coming that way to some extent.
So how is that different from the original plan of having the two sites?
This is when we first came to the board supervisors, that's where we were looking at the possible ways to sort of that we fit. And we're locating Pine Grove Road. So if you look at that, and what I showed you before, obviously, under, and we do look at Pine Grove Road. So that's how, you know, we're going from a, we're going from a maximum of six hundred and fifty acres, even if we get the permits to impact a certain percentage of streams, we know we've slashed the size to a maximum of three fifty, I'm not saying we can get there. So what we're trying to show is, one, going forward, our phase that we know we can do is basically about a hundred and forty. We don't want to suggest we're never going to stick an expansion. We would like to, if we get the permits down the road, but we do know that even if we did, it was substantially small, and we didn't want folks saying, well, you might ultimately get to six fifty, when we knew we couldn't. So that's how we came forward to say, okay, we want to put in the conditional use permit. This is what our, our plan is, and that would be on Pine Grove Road, the maximum at fifteen hundred tons a day. But if we back, if we're able to access sixty, and we've got federal permits, there could be expansion, which we're showing in general areas on the preliminary site plan, where that would occur. While also spreading out where we could, so for example, we need to put in, we can set any waste disposal less of currently located Pine Grove Road.
Yeah, it does kind of, but I have a follow-up question, and Mr. Johnson, you may be able to help me on this. But the, so I referenced one plate, and I'll just look it back up again, but you had indicated that the conditional use permit was supposed to be a permanent conditional use permit. So how can we vote on a permanent conditional use permit when we don't know what ultimately it's gonna look like?
Well, I, I think when you look at that, it's like, with any reason, most reasons, what we're looking at is, at this point, as we're going forward with the project, and the length of time it takes to get, showing that commitment, spending more than twenty, you know, twenty million dollars, it was committed to the project.
No, I, I understand you're committed to the project.
So, so in the initial use permit, I mean, in other words, if we have a timing, we're gonna actually have to, I mean, we want to, you know, what we have as a plan, if we're still the capacity, then, then you've, then it has to be closed. We're simply, we work with, we got the information through the town. But it's, I can't give you the specific, but even now, I mean, we have so much more information than we did in two thousand and fifteen. So it's much more specific than it was in two thousand and fifteen.
Right, and I understand, which, which would indicate, so, you know, we're having a new CUP now, because it's substantially changed from the first one, right?
Yeah, it's much smaller.
Yes, exactly. So if this is accepted, the future plans are twice the size of what the current plan is. That's a pretty significant change.
Yeah, but it, but it, what we're doing, what we're trying to do is, I mean, I think what you do is prepare to what was in twenty eighteen. Because when you're looking at twenty eighteen, it was even broader. So what we're trying to put in the conditional use permit is, we can't tell you, and a lot of this is under this. This is under GFC, you go through the permit, the federal permits, you can't say exactly what that layout's gonna be. You've gotta go through, not only the core, but you've gotta go through what you do and what the party permit decided. But what we can say is, where, where it would, where it would occur for all of us. And given that we know that there are limitations, because we were, we weren't sensitive to people saying, well, I don't know what's your ultimate limit. We don't put any limit on it, then we may ultimately show up at five thousand tons a day, and we may ultimately have six hundred and fifty. And so the way we're trying to solve that is, I'm saying, okay, we're going to put outward boundaries on what it can be, and where it can be. Knowing that you have to open with this design, the landfill itself. And that's just part of the unique nature of a landfill. So I think we have a lot more information, a lot more specific in this condition, we can work in two thousand and fifteen. We can provide more, I'll be glad to share more information of how we think the phase in will occur, and where, where it will occur. And so we'll, we'll be able to provide some of that information.
Yeah, I just, I, I want clarity, all right, that's all.
And that's why, I mean, this is very helpful, okay, here's some information, that if we were to get an expansion, this is where it would occur. This is how we take the phase in with the progress, the location direction, I think that we can do that. But we, but we're going into this knowing that we would have to get permits that we got perfect. So I, and I understand that we're, we're going on this, and maybe a bit of this, that we're moving on what's being presented now, plus the expansion? I mean, I mean, it, it's putting in there that there's an ability to expand, it's like with any zoning, you put zoning to certain uses.
With, just one, one point of clarification, there is a difference between zoning and a CUP. So when you have a zoning request change, then it allows for all the uses in that zone. But when it's outside of a particular zoning request, then that's when the conditional use becomes apparent. And our conditional use permits typically are not permanent. They become permanent after so much time typically, but even with that, they're open to revision.
Well, and it comes through as, when it typically is when it's gonna start, part, part of the issue that you have on this is, it's given the unique nature of a landfill, and the extensive nature of the permitting process, as I think we demonstrate, that that's hard to get that specific, specific date. So it's a fairly unique, it's given, given the unique nature of the extensive engineering and regulatory framework. But what, what we can do in this, in terms of the conditions permit, is be getting a lot more exacting conditions than you would normally have in a zoning case. And so if you look at the list of, the list of suggested conditions that we pay, they're pretty detailed and exactly, probably a lot more than you would anticipate when you took these under. And so, but we can work with, if there's questions and concerns, we can work with the Pine Division staff, of what sort of conditions are being needed for it in there. And one of the things we do have in here that is very helpful, which we didn't have in two thousand and fifteen, and seldom have with any kind of large project, is we've got the benefit of the extensive analysis and engineering that's provided. Normally, we don't spend, you know, twenty million dollars before we come into a cop law with zoning. And you've got a determination that this site is in fact suitable. And so we think that that's very helpful, in terms of, okay, is this appropriate to, to do another CUP, that we have a measure of.
Mr. Johnson, do you have something you want to add?
Yes, sir, thank you very much. I would just like to say that what we have this evening, what we're looking at are proposed conditions by the developer, by the applicant. I will say that the attorney, Mr. Schumay for Greenridge, and our outside legal counsel are in negotiations. So what you see before you this evening are not set in stone. You do not have to accept the conditions that are proposed, so we are working on that. Again, this is just a workshop to gather information, so I just wanted to make that point of clarification.
And that's very helpful, because what I said at the outset is, this is a higher level, because we're all still working with, with staff and, and many representatives. But this is helpful of, of these questions that are coming up, that there are ways that we can possibly address them.
Right, basically, I'm sorry, I need to catch up, I apologize.
No, no, no.
I just think it's important that we, we stand on track and realize that we're here to, to evaluate the conditional use permit that's before us today, and not speculate on what could be down the line. It's important to gather information, but we need to stay here because we can get sidetracked very easily here. With all due respect, Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure what I'm supposed to be voting on, that's why I was wanting clarity on. Well, I know that, but we will be voting, and if this is the, if this is the conditional use permit, I need to know what we're authorizing, if this is what part of it is, if that makes sense?
Absolutely, it does. And tonight, we are looking at some information, we already had a second workshop. So tonight, we are looking to get information from the applicant, gather questions, so that way we can look at questions and provide answers at the next one.
Right, exactly, which was why I was trying to get information on what is the ultimate goal. Greenridge has their best choices available, what is the ultimate goal, so that I can know what the plan is.
And I would say to that, just see what the final, like, where do you want to go? Obviously, we see, you know, what, what we are now, but where are you going? Where are we gonna end up? It seems like that, that's the thing to be in the CUP, to grow from where we're at. So we're voting on from, you know, where the current design to what their office is on, I feel like we need to be aware. And that's part of what we're bringing forward, so what, if there's any possible expansion, where, where would it occur? And, and that'll be part of the process, and what we're working with, say, right now, for example, is a phase in the framework. There, that would be part of the preliminary site plan, our scene details is, having to identify in the areas where that possible expansion could be. And, and it's, it's, it's also, what I'm trying to do is, yes, we're coming in at a hundred and fifty hundred tons a day now. I don't leave the impression is, that's what we're putting, if you look at the economics of a landfill, the way it works, enormous amount of money you have to put in to build a landfill. I mean, that, that, that's the upfront cost. It, it becomes important as you can to try to expand it, because your variable cost goes down over time, if that makes sense. So I didn't leave the impression, oh, we're only gonna put ever be fifteen hundred tons a day. But we're also very realistic, we have to look at this going forward and say, that's, that's all we are. And go forward, and understand.
I was just gonna say, because you had the traffic impact slide up, we took it.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay. You know, I like the fact that you're no longer asking to be open twenty-four hours a day, I think, I think that's a plus. Opening at six o'clock in the morning, I'm wondering, and it wouldn't matter what time it was, you've chosen six, to me, this is my question related, if you opened at nine or ten, it would be the same thing. Would you anticipate that at six o'clock in the morning, there would be trucks lined up to get in?
The reason, as a matter of fact, if you see landfills, it would not be. The only reason why you see landfills, if they have trucks lining up, is they're accepting how they're placed. You're having a lot of hall callers that are coming in, and just the way that business works, it makes sense for them to be driving, they're all hall at night, so they can be there when the landfill opens. Given that we're saying this is a genome, and basically something GFL, that actually makes absolutely no sense to do.
Do the, do the drivers, as they're approaching, or as they're getting within, you know, an hour, two hours, do they contact the office of the landfill and say, hey, are you busy now, do I need to hold off? Or do they just come and show up?
GFL would be more organizing, and given the size of this landfill, that's, that, and we'll follow up more information, that's not gonna be the issue. The other thing is.
Seven, seven and a half trucks a day is only seven, seven and a half trucks an hour, I mean, that's, yeah, that's not the time.
Yeah, it's, the traffic is not gonna be at thirty-five hundred tons a day, thirty-five hundred a day. And then, at that point, you gotta come off Route sixty. And we've done our inch and trove, it's almost a mile long. So at fifteen hundred tons a day, and that, this hundred five trucks, that's absolutely not an issue. And then if we're putting in the condition that to go above that, our sole access can be only off that entry truck, we're not gonna have trucks back then. And one of the things we also like is, we're getting so the trucks are not. The other thing that GFL wants is, don't really want your trucks operating during the rush out, so at five o'clock. So, kind of a future question. This gives you an idea of how this was currently designed. We were looking at, while we were five hundred acres of disposal, currently it's a hundred and four, as I've said. We're trying to do the analysis of, we're not believing we're near that, so we put in the conditional use permit, if we want it. I think we said three hundred and fifty acres. The maximum height above ground.
Okay, so can, can we pause on that for just a second, because again, I'm confused. So the original design was five hundred acres?
It had actually six hundred and fifty acres, we anticipated that.
We're not doing that. So you say current design is a hundred and four, with an expansion to what?
The maximum I'd give you would be three fifty.
Okay, so what I would like to see on these graphs going forward, is what the maximum.
And we would do that.
Okay, good.
We will do that, follow it. This is just, I'm, and then the maximum height above, above ground level, you see sea level, but that's obviously a different number of vertical points, above ground level. It had a design of three hundred and thirty feet of what the surrounding area was. Under the current design of a hundred, the current design is approved under the Part A, Part B right now. It would be a hundred, so we'd slash it out to two hundred and twenty-three. But, and we will have this on another slide. Even if you got the maximum of expansion, if you're still a little over a hundred feet low, you can be well over a hundred feet lower than what was originally existing, just given where it would occur. And I'll show that in the slide. And we're obviously substantial, given the shrinking of, of landfill, we're, we're slashing even more of the number of, only for the half mile, which I think would remain the same, because we'd have more loss of pine grove. And then, given that the original design, we were at less than two acres, right now, zero. The stream impact, there was six hundred and fifty, which would be twenty-five thousand feet of streams impact. Now, to note that we bought the credits already, and what we do once is, they've emotionalized credits, they're impacting.
Yeah, so I have a question about that. I read about that in preparation for that. And I understand the idea behind that. But, so if you, if you get authorization to mess with some water by helping other water, how does that help the people around this water reserve?
Well, it's just that we still have to maintain water quality. So, so the whole point is not to affect the water quality off, off, off the property itself. So you still have stormwater management requirements, but that's just if you're gonna impact a stream in terms. We, we initially actually looked to possibly buy additional property. In a lot of areas with farming, actually, there's a lot of degradation around streams, this is the nature. Looking to buy property that's nearby to a storm, DQ actually doesn't like that process, because they're worried about monitoring and so forth, so they're, they're, it's. So, they're, it's being a certain ownership of buying credits where weapons and stream banks are created, and then buying the, so it's part of our process, we actually bought the credits. But again, we can tell that we know that any stream, even with any impact, or any permit to allow stream impact, is going to be much less than what it originally is. I guess I share any of this with the original design, which included relocating Pine Road Road. And this is the current design. Some of the new conditions that I've talked about, that we've had an ally, and this is part of the ally, but what we've been working to do is talk about what was allowed in 2018, and then what are some of the significant differences we think the community and private commission would appreciate? Obviously, there were the relocation of Pine Road Road, the waste disposal, what's the Pine Road Road, slashing the amount of maximum disposal, cutting the tonnage from five thousand tons a day to thirty-five hundred tons a day, that's with any expansion. More than fifteen hundred tons a day from Pine Road Road, and what we'll be doing, envision the same, you're going to bump out, the change in cap here with the sixty, you would shut the waste disposal of Pine Road Road access. And the big ones is using the public deposit system, reducing the hours to twenty-four hours a day, to ten hours a day, six days, and six hours to seven. And one of the things we kept hearing was that there was a problems, I mentioned, with animal freezers and roadworks and other things, so it's a problem. And so, one of the commitments that were made was the TAC. Not for any landfill, it would be clear on that. I mean, if you come in as part of the unit's disposal, then you probably have taken away. We have, as we talked about, a number of new actions. And one thing, the first thing I just want to say is, after we got the COP, Greenridge wants to be a good neighbor to public land, to be a good core of this. So, some of the things that you're putting in here on this list are things that after we receive our company's approval that they get, and it's part of showing that they're a real value, an important part of the community. And so, this is just a list of some of the things that we had in terms of paying about four hundred thousand dollars on the community, paying two more thousand dollars of help. So, two Cumberland County directors, several of student public services, they did scholarships for public schools, they've donated forty million dollars to public parks, the public security, they've donated a hundred thousand dollars in CBA. So, they want to demonstrate that they want to be an important part of this community, a valuable part of the community. And just letting you know, we've done a number of community meetings. We had outreach and talk with individual groups, four families zoning case. Also have a public meeting, four families, where we advertise it, synapsis adjacent. We've had extensive third-party studies in anthropology, weapons, and we have done a determination of the weapons on the property, so we can share with you exactly where they are. We've seen that before, in the seismology, cultural resources, traffic, and predominant danger species. We've got the Part A permit, initially approved by BEQ. We've anticipated Part B, we've been working since we got the Part A approval, extensive design, it's incredibly detailed. We anticipate the actual Part B will be filed, I don't know when it's next month, and that we're working through the project there, permitting application. This is just telling you a little bit about what the Part B permit involves, but it is more than the very details of how you design and how you operate the landfill. One thing this is show in terms of visual impact, we had done a balloon test. This was back when we thought it was much higher. So, we did a balloon test, we took very large balloon, and we go around the various locations to see if we could see the top of it, and ultimately, the landfill is empty, and then the issues for them. But because of the extensive property, we have a lot of property, which we've been paying, there isn't, I don't think we'll have a visual impact. This is taking away off the property of Pine Road School, Pine Road Mall School. And this is when we thought it would be three hundred and thirty feet above the ground level, and you couldn't see the top of the landfill, just the whole road next to Pine Road School. Obviously, that would be, you can tell that it was under traffic. And that's our presentation. You may have minded this specific general documents, like the EJ system or the LID system, ECR, if you'd like to do funding on that. Again, this is supposed to be a very broad overview. Where we were, where we are, where we're going. We can get into more detail, discuss the actual conditions, the phase in, that's what I'm going to do.
I'm sorry, I was not aware of the different agenda activities for the various workshops. So, I was, I took note of a lot of stuff, I'm not sure whether I'm supposed to ask them tonight, or whether I'm supposed to wait until the next meeting.
You can ask, I'm always available. If people want to ask me questions, I'm always available at my job.
You're more than welcome to ask your questions, Mr. Donahue. What can't be answered tonight? I think I'll take that, and we can see what answers, at least by the next workshop.
Okay.
If you have questions in the interim, if you want to be on line, I mean, I'm always available to say, these are my questions. So, the next word, either in or to my workshop, I can say, okay, here's the information that you would like.
Okay. I have a question, just kind of a general question. Doesn't really have anything to do with the conditional use permit, but when you're looking for a site, what are you looking for?
There are, I guess it's two forms. One is, does it make just a sense from the service area you're trying to travel to, and including Greenridge, having ways to make a determination, given that you were having the shrinking capacity that you had predicted? And the construction of landfills will serve in this area, which one flows, that they need to be a landfill to serve southwest, and there's a hundred thousand customers who are going to use it. So, then you go and talk to any number of localities in that area. The number of localities are going to be interested in having a landfill. Cumberland had previously planted a landfill. I think they made, in the size and the economic, some of the economic, it's going to be a very strong economic engine, I think they were also, high school course, commitments, or based on the previous landfill, so Cumberland was one of the localities that was accepted. We would put it on very eastern part of Cumberland now. So, that's one thing. But then you have the detailed analysis. When I talk about Part A process, it's hard for me to overemphasize how exact that is, because you then have to find a site that you think is suitable, from the soils, from the geotechnical aspect, from road access, from cultural resources, there's a whole list of literally things you've got to consider for BEQ to say, we believe it's a suitable site. I mean, it's under the new, it's under set kind of regulations, so it's very, very exact that, and it's difficult to find that site. So, one of the things we're looking at now, in the property, is looking to see if it's suitable. And made that determination that that's, we thought it was a suitable site for a landfill, given the various factors, from the geotechnical and geology, cultural resources, and so. And so, that's going through the process that I put a little bit guarantee that BEQ was free. And that's why I think this is information, because you have now, which you couldn't have in 2018, because it's two thousand and eighteen. Certainly, there's no guarantee, BEQ not giving us some analysis and say, yeah, this is a suitable site. What you do have now is, after that process analysis, you do have the information of, this is what the property environment thinks about the site itself. You've got a lot of specifics, more conditions in the COP, and that's a very important part of the process. So, it's two-fold, it is two-fold. So, the geographic standpoint is the next, the impacts that you have, and then from
A broader question, so I was here in two, again, I was here in 2018. So, reading what I've read tonight and seeing what was initially proposed in 2018, I don't know how to ask this, but is there an explanation of just to say, okay, we're starting here, but it seems like we're trying to grow to what was initially proposed in 2018? That's what it sounds like to me. So, just trying to...
Because what we're doing is, one is, we're letting you know what our permit is currently allowing us to do, and we just, I have permission cameras. So, we can come forward and say, well, it's been, seemed as Part A approved. The second is, though, is we know now, that it's not going to be nearly as large as we anticipated, which the COP would have allowed, just from the practical standpoint, the studies, the analysis, and the agreements we've made, for example, helping update Pine Road Road. And so, if you look at this COP, and that's what I want to go through, compared to what 2018 is, this is a smaller, much, much less compactful landfill, yeah. We'll see. My belief, and one of the things we like about coming in with a small landfill is, you can see what it is and what it's not. We don't think anybody knows that we're there at the end of the day. That's one reason why...
It's thirty, thirty percent less...
At max.
Yes. Just, I mean, just, I mean, you know, significant, is thirty percent significant? I mean, that, you know, obviously, you don't think it's significant, or whatever, but anyway, I just wanted to make that clear, that it is thirty percent less.
So, we, off the table, it would be at least thirty percent less, I think that's right. And then, there are other things that we've done, for example, the double composite, that there's some other major changes that we've made that we think are good, to give even further assurances and protections, and will be, we're going to improve the issues for them, such as the double composite, which is cutting the hours, which is not relocating Pine Road Road, which is saying, we're not going to pivot, we're going to be well over a hundred feet less in height, even if we go all the way to thirty-five hundred. Those are things we can work on with staff.
So, Mr. Chairman, I've got a bunch of questions for clarification. I don't know how you want to handle having me ask these questions, whether you just want to go by turn, or how do you, it's not supposed to be a formal workshop. All right, so the first question I have is in relationship to conditional, or condition number six. It indicates that the permittee will operate this facility in such a manner as to avoid unreasonable traffic congestion. What is unreasonable traffic congestion? I would like clarity on that. You don't have an answer now, I'd just be clarity for, you know, the next year.
Like I said, we're working on, we're working on the conditions with Sam.
Right, yeah.
I think that was from the original COP.
Yes. Well, yeah, I mean, that's an option. One of my colleagues just said, should I just get you a bunch of the questions, and then have you work on it in or in them, or you want me to go through these line by line and ask all those questions?
I think that would be helpful, because she can get it, and then I can know which part of our team, for example, Mike or Adrian, because you may have some engineering questions on them, I can then provide the answers. And so, that probably strikes me as a good way to approach. And I also know that we're working on the conditions still, with it would be counting, and so, I think we're very close to getting to where we think it was that we're going to be, which might be helpful to the committee, but I do want to know your questions, because it may be something we haven't thought of for Greenridge County.
Yeah, so what I'll do then, if it's okay, is I'll just keep, if it's okay with you, then what I'll do is I'll just email you my questions, you can forward them, he can take care of them, or have...
I think that's a great idea. And go from that. I think at this point, man, does anybody else have any other questions that they need answered?
I just have one question. What about the life expectancy?
It depends if we get the expansion.
All right, what does that depend on?
It depends if we get the expansion.
Could you just answer it, assuming we get the expansion?
Expecting to say, I think you're looking at probably between thirty, depending on the level of expansion, thirty to the absolute maximum before we're...
Do you have any other questions?
So, I just have one general question.
Okay.
And this is for Mr. Johnson. Are we going to see the host agreement?
So, the host agreement is currently under negotiations. And so, the goal of the condition is to monitor and look at the conditional use permit. The host agreement is actually going to go to the more supervisors.
As it did last time, too. I had it in my hands beforehand, and it was nice to see that, because I was able to point out some inconsistencies and things like that. So, I would like to have it if I could.
I will get with the county attorney, get with county administrator, and see what we can do, but I know that, again, that is currently being worked.
If it's okay with you, Ms. Johnson, why don't we, as commissioners, if any of us have any other questions that come up between now and February tenth, get them to Ms. Johnson through email, so she hasn't been writing, then she can submit them to you, and then at our meeting on the tenth, they can all be addressed.
That's right.
Okay?
That's what we're very happy to have, the second workshop.
Yeah, and I would encourage you to come up with questions, because the more we know, the more educated our decision will be. So, let's not be afraid to do that. Okay, when I get a motion, then?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adjourn to ten February twenty twenty-five at the Cumberland Middle High School, Councilorium, and we meet at six thirty.
Second, a second.
Mr. Matzil?
Yes.
Mr. Steve Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Devin Meadows?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Steve Rosen?
Yes.
Mr. Harry Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Blake Flotter?
Yes.
We are adjourned.